Welcome to the regular meeting of council Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 at 4:40 PM. Meeting called to order. Meeting called to order and we'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda? We acknowledge that the town of Kirk Lake is located on the traditional territories of the Cree and Algonquin peoples and other indigenous people whose presence continues to enrich our environment community today. We recognize and offer our gratitude for their care and teachings about the earth and culture. We recognize, we honor these teachers for interactions today and every day year after. We thank them for sharing this land with us. We commit to ongoing learnings about how cultural identity is celebrated, represented, and honored as well as the inclusion of the indigenous perspectives through actions. Thank you, which?
Thank you.
Now we'll have the meeting called to order. And a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Jean Ivenoff. Be resolved with the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on September 20th, 2022 be approved as circulated.
All in favor? Motion carried. Declaration of pecuniary interest. None noted. Petitions and delegations, item 4.1. We have the update for Northern College and upcoming initiatives. Dr. Audrey Kenner, President and CEO of Northern College, Jeff Mollinow, Northern College Board of Governors, and Drew Reinoi, Northern College Campus Manager. Welcome Audrey.
Well, thank you very much for having me and again, it's wonderful and I know you're in the process of an election. So I'm very appreciative of any time that you're willing to give the college. And just one correction Drew was unable to make tonight. He is taking his master's degree in a class. So Helen Stubble, one of our board of governors has joined us in steps. So I have two of my governors here tonight.
Welcome.
So thank you very much. You have the package, I believe, the PowerPoint that we presented. So I'm going to walk through it, add a little bit of background, hopefully some color and flavor to it. So 2022 has been about building, changing, and adapting. We've done a lot of work in increased student support. I think you were well aware that COVID mental health initiatives were something that was very important and we've certainly done a lot of that. We've also done a lot of new work in financial supports for students and I particularly like to highlight what we've done for youth in extended care and put a call up for that. If you know of young people who are aging out of the extended care system, I think it's important to let us know because we have wraparound services and we can cover costs, bring them into the college and get them started on a career path. That makes a significant change in their overall life success. So happy to do that. Just connect with the college if you know some because they don't always know and they don't have a support network to do that kind of thing. We're coming out with a campus master plan and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more later on. And if you go on our website and the next couple of weeks, you're going to see a complete redesign. We're coming into higher tech age and when I dropped in the center to get set up, I know your team is on cybersecurity. We're doing a lot of work in that realm and a lot more automation on our site. So you will see a new look and a new feel. So looking forward to the next slide, Kirkland Lake. We've had a renewal of the building envelope. You'll see new windows and brickwork, very much infrastructure work. Right now, if you were to try to get in the main entrance, you wouldn't be able to because there's parking lot resurfacing, major resurfacing. And really exciting homecoming event October 22nd and I'm really hopeful that I'll be able to see most of you there at that. I know I got my bus ticket book to come up for that. The participation in that community event was just phenomenal. So very strong community participation. Another example of that was the Jack Pacey Beards Off Burseries Pit, where we had three of our staff members and Jeff from our board of governors was a member that volunteered as well, offered to get their beard shaved off for sufficient donations. And at the end of it, I believe we got over $20,000 in donations to set up a burcery for a gentleman who was revered by our students and our staff. So looking ahead, let me come back to the campus master plan. I'd love to be able to say to you exactly what's going to be in there. Haven't told my board of governors yet, so can't tell you. They have to approve it. That's one of those little nuances we have in our binding policy directives. But there are some exciting elements that you will see. What we've done to date and we have more detail on it. What we've done today has been largely infrastructure. What you'll be seeing is more about design, framework, look, and attractiveness of the campus in the campus master plan. Very much about campus renewal, very much about welcoming outdoor spaces and gym enhancement as well. And then looking to the future, currently we have enrolled 260 students. That includes some that are onsite and some that are off. 219 domestic students, which is really incredible. That's an increase. As you're well aware, the domestic population is declining for that student age group. But yet we've been able to increase somewhat here. Forty-one international students. You'll be seeing a larger intake of international students over the next 12 to 18 months as we establish new programs and all of that. And we have 10% more students studying on campus in Kirkland Lake this year than last year. And that is actually a little bit out of context because we also have one program that's in hiatus. So we didn't take any students in. That is our program that we are converting to a degree program, a three-year degree and it'll be the first one Northern College offers. So our faculty are tied up doing that. So they're not teaching students. So 10% of what we had last year, but that's with program taken out of it. So that really means the numbers are looking good. So investing in Kirkland Lake, we're talking about campus renewal. And I am way over my death here. I have no idea how you replace boilers, but I know we spent $344,000 on it. We've done some re-roofing. That was desperately needed. There's several sections and anyone who's been in our campus knows that we label them by letter. So there's A, B, C. So D, G, and H had continuation of a roof program. The gym floor renewal, the resurfacing, 45,000 gym floors could not come easily. A lot of work to do them. And the asphalt repair, now that's open above the paving that we're doing. We've done some repair roadways. And now we are doing the larger front entrance way and the larger parking lot. The KL campus top renovations and interior improvements, miscellaneous painting, flooring, and lighting upgrades. It's amazing how quickly that adds up. And in 2021, we thought we would put that in as well. We're going back about three years here. We have partial re-roofing. This is on the next slide, partial re-roofing of the A, B, K, and M wing. And that came to about half a million. The gym painting and logo, that was about 19,000. Transfer switch replacements, about 50,000. Common glazing renewal, mislaced again, painting and lighting that goes along with those renovations. So on page, the next slide, we have ongoing with the campus renewal. We have even a longer list of things that we have done and I'm going to take you to the following slide after that investment in Kirkland Lake. Total money spent. Because I just wanted to highlight, when you do these things sort of year by year, kind of get lost in the shuffle and it doesn't really seem like it's all that effective. But over the past four years, we've invested 6.6 million in the Kirkland Lake campus. And it's really starting to look up. I know Mia Kylie, when you and I had lunch this summer, you said, boy, the campus is looking good. Right now it doesn't. All the paving going on. Overall, it is better. So it's a significant investment and it's because we really do believe in the facility and it's got a wonderful heritage and history to it. So moving to indigenous education empowerment. One of the things that I can tell you, we have as a college committed to recognition of truth and reconciliation. And one of the things we're doing is installing statues on each of our campuses in commemoration of lost indigenous youth through the residential schools program. So this will be two dancers, male and female, young children dancers. And we're getting those two statues commissioned, one for each campus. And we plan to put it on the Kirkland Lake campus just in the, when you drive up to the driveway, just to the right as you're going around. It's the area where we've normally put the temporary tiki. We've also done new windows in the pathway through there. So be able to enjoy these statues both if you're inside and if you're driving by outside. So we're really looking forward to that. They're copper. They're commissioned by artists in Southern Ontario. It was actually originally from Thunder Bay area. The access centers, we're doing more across the west, north, eastern region, access centers. And indigenizing curriculum. This has been quite significant over the last year where we have actually developed a course that we are requiring all full-time students to take around indigenous history and indigenous culture. And going through every one of our course outlines to pull out outdated, inappropriate language and to assure that we're using language that is compliant with truth and reconciliation. We feel as educators, we have a big part to play in that. And that project has just completed. So we're very proud of that. Equity, diversity, and inclusion. We have drafted, one of the things I took on when I became president, was to identify how we could more effectively be diverse and be more equitable and certainly more inclusion. Because again, as an educational institution, we should be a beacon of light for what everyone else is trying to do. And through that, we've had a task force that has focused on EDI. And they have drafted what we call the ideal college. That has now been published and accepted by the college as a whole. And now our idea is how do we make that ideal college come to life? So it's the ideal college that recognizes equity, diversity, and inclusion. You can see it on our website. If you'd like to Google it and have a look and read what we're saying about it. It includes indigenization. It includes the reasons about equity that often people lose track of, like people that have vision problems, people that have hearing problems, people that are from a visible minority, people that are from a religious minority, all of those things. And we've designed, what does that ideal college mean and what do we want it to look like? We're benchmarking that. We're not just saying it. We're benchmarking it. We have two measures that we're using to benchmark that. One is from the Indigenous Quality Assurance Document called Building a Stronger Fire. And the other is from the Global Benchmarks for EDI, which is an international organization that has measurements that you can look at and say, what are we doing? And you can measure up to that. And I now am recording that to our board of governors. And through that, obviously a culture of respect and continuous improvement is really what it's all about. Because if we don't continue to try to get better, we are not going to get that. So. And connecting to immune communities, access to affordable housing, that is a big issue in all our communities. And Mia Kylie's getting targeted some of the meetings like we have, our community groups on access to housing. We are quite open as a college to developing more residential housing in partnership with community partners or private sector. We've had the door open on that and we've had some discussions. As yet, we have not aligned up with partner. If we need to, we will do this on our own in terms of housing for students. However, again, I'm tied by binding policy directives and that's in a consultation stage. So all the pieces have to be in the right order before we can move forward on anything like that. Again, if we can do this with partners, I think it's a core community, much more so than just one segment of the community. But what we are trying to do is create win-win relationships with all of our communities and recognizing that students build the future. They build all of our futures. This is part of our economic development. So not only local domestic students, but international students. We have a labor market shortage everywhere. I'm not too sure there's anybody that can say, gee, their jobs are all filled. It's a tough slide out there. So we feel a serious obligation to that for labor force development. And one of the things we've been doing over the past two years is identifying talent pipelines, working directly with industry on talent pipelines. The talent pipelines are an opportunity for industry to sign directly with us and they actually they can help us recruit students. They can work directly with our students. They can offer co-op placements. They can give students opportunities for other job training, work-integrated learning, and recruit them while they're still students to work for them when they come out. So that's what we call the talent pipelines. And it's been quite successful. We've had a number of companies come to us and say, could we sign on for that? Now, the downside is sometimes our entire graduating class is spoken for by the time they walk across the stage. But that just means we have to graduate more people, right? Looking to the future, we really are globalizing as an institution. No longer can we just be North Eastern Ontario. Economy dictates that we reach further than that. Technology dictates that we reach further than that. And we've developed some interesting partnerships that we are talking with Global College in Calgary, Alberta, on some interesting things around labor force development that they're doing that we need to partner with. We're also still in China, we still have partnerships in China. And we're looking at other international opportunities that we can partner and help develop things because it is a global community now. Sustainability, we are in a positive cash flow and we have been for the last five years with our budget. And through that, we've been able to invest in things like the infrastructure that we have invested in here at Kirkland Lake. We're also setting money aside because we also know there's always ups and downs and the downtime will come and we want to make sure that we have some a cushion there for when the downtime comes. So planning ahead for that. We also know the impact of our grads, which is really phenomenal. Right now, we're in a measured process with the ministry called a strategic mandate agreement whereby through a data correlation, collection and correlation, they're measuring the impact of our graduates in the economy. And our impact at Northern College has been significant. What I can't get out of that is how we can compare to other colleges. I just know we're doing really well. We're in the high 90% of us, but I can't get what others are doing. There is strategic mandate agreement. That level of detail is not necessarily published. We are embracing change. I am taking my management team through managing transitions process to help them with not only change, but dealing with continuous change. That is the future of what we're doing. Everything higher in is a prime example, but it's also the future in governance and in the industry as well. So on that note, I'm going to stop talking and again, I want to thank you for giving me some time because I know we are in elections and then obviously the world is for municipal governance right now. Happy to answer questions if you have it. Recognizing that in some cases I don't have a level of detail. I have to go back and send it back to you.
Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Penner, and welcome to the council. I have questions regarding two items. One would be programs, the other would be housing, as you've stated. I do know that the lifeblood of any campus would be program and program regimens. So do you maybe let us know what programs are coming to Kirkland Lake campus in the distant future? And also what are the, what's the status of BSC nursing, which you've been asking me? And I send them to the campus manager and massage therapy.
Okay.
Now, my second question.
We're going to answer that first and then we'll get back to the second. So in terms of programming, right now what we have at the campus is social service worker, healthcare food services, that's for our contract training division, business fundamentals, practical nursing, early childhood education, computer engineering technician, mechanical technician, and personal support worker. And that does not include some of the building programs we have. What's coming is the first degree, three-year degree in welding, which assuming we will get approved through the ministry. And what is also coming are some programs related to environmental sciences and environmental reclamation post-mining capacity. And right now, I would guess that will be three to four new programs. Don't have the, some of them are specialization, some of them would be a strictly different program.
And the status of the BSC nursing and the side therapy?
We're still going forward. That's for science nursing is still going forward. We are in partnership with Laurentian and that is continued. We just removed that. And with massage therapy, unfortunately, we've never been able to make that program fly. There just does not seem to be the demand that we would like to see with it. So we have never been able to offer.
My second one in respect to housing. Last time you were here, we did talk about that. I encourage the college to work with the management team to make sure that we're not behind the lead ball regarding retaining the retention of the international students. I know you've been very active personally when you were EPA to try to attract a lot of international students and not to see that is growing. And that being the case, we don't want our community to miss out on international students. So how far are we? What is the timeline that we have? At least in trying to have a residence for international students. And I stated last night too, and this is a factual statement, not a criticism, that we remain the only campus, community campus that has no residents per se. But I mean, it's not your fault. It's not our fault, but that's just the way it is. So what, what kind of timeline are we looking at? At least to have that residence, either through what you said or partnership with other parties at least, we will begin to have this.
So with regards to international students, I did check before I came in, not one of our international students is short of housing in this region. They all have housing. There was a fire. Those students have been relocated. We've arranged emergency burseries to cover off to help them in the meantime. So that's been looked after. What you have to remember councillor Shaba, is there's a shortage in the long term for residents. As I said before, to building residence solely as a campus, we've got a lot of hoops to jump through. You're looking at three to five years before that can be fruition. That's not a timeline I can control and that's only if everything goes well. When I chatted with, and we pulled together, Pat and I pulled together DSAB and the city municipal council. Partnerships are the key to this and it's important that we have the data to do that. And that was one of the pieces that was missing from the municipal side. And we're looking for more data, what's needed. And the same thing for the DSAB side. We have the data. We know what we need. Again, if we only build it as a residence for students and that's its sole purpose, that can be done. That's about a five-year window. If we can do something in the short term with municipalities, with DSAB, with private industry, that's something in the midterm, one to three years, I think, could easily be a good window for that. In the short term, we'll be looking at acquiring some space to make sure students are housed.
Thank you.
Councillor Wade?
Honestly, though it takes a team to make great changes and sweeping changes, since you've come on board, you've been and your team has been the catalyst for change. There has been such a marked increase, not only in programming, in attendance, but even upgrades that we've seen. And honestly and truly, those upgrades are just like a show of faith that what's on the horizon for our community. And I thank you and your team for all that you've done in the last four years. It's incredible work.
Well, thank you very much. I will credit my team. I lead a fantastic team and that's what I told the board of governors at the meeting last week. It's the team that does it. It's politically incorrect. I'll just say I'm pretty thankful. But, but on that note, we are in a good financial position and we are very attuned to communities. And we know how much communities need us and we know how important we are to the development in the communities. We have another good news story coming up next week on our community climate survey, which we just wrapped up and I presented to the board last week. And there's lots more good news there in what we heard and also what we're going to take from them and to go further. One example is when we come up here for the October 22nd event and the Kirkland Lake team, hockey team. You know, we heard from communities, you know, we don't necessarily see as much as we'd like. So now we're actually generating a list of community events in each of the communities we're in. What can we get to? Because we might not, I might not be able to get to them all, but we have staff in all these communities too. So that they go out and make sure that Northern College is present in a lot of these events.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Dr. Penner, I am so impressed with the work that's being done at Northern College right now. I've lived in this town for over 40 years. I've never seen that amount of work done at that campus. And for many years, myself, even before I was on council, was concerned that everything was moving to Timmins and Kirkland Lake campus, the original campus would be closed down. But to see what you and your team have been able to do in terms of modernizing and updating that campus at this point in time, I have no worries that the Kirkland Lake campus will exist many years into the future. And I also want to thank you for being so open and willing to come to our council meetings, especially with me on the council. I'm not always the friendliest guy. Well, I tend to be a little blunt, they tell me.
Oh, head nose.
I gotta give you kudos for that. It's really nice and it's just, it sort of takes away from this. Well, everything's in Timmins because Dr. Penner is here every time we ask her or every time she has an announcement to make. She is here. She's including us, you know, and making us, at least me, I shouldn't say us, but it makes me feel that Northern College fully understands that the Kirkland Lake campus is important. So I want to thank you for that and you know, just keep up doing what you're doing because it's very impressive.
Well, I thank you very much for that. Again, it's my team. I'll go back to a little bit of my history. I grew up in small town Manitoba. I know what small towns are and ironically, I remember a conversation, I'm not sure councillor Shabbat remembers it, when he was working with us, one of the first conversations he and I had. He said, do you know what it's like in Northern Ontario? And I said, well, I grew up in Southern Manitoba, which ironically is further north than this. So yeah. So no, I really appreciate the compliments. I will take that back to my team, but it is very much a team effort and I have a fantastic team. And just a little sidebar, I know talent recruitment is a problem, but I've been doing a really good job of stealing some real high talent from some other institutions across the province. So don't tell people. Attracting.
If that would be more of a politician and less of a local one, then you're okay.
Are there any other questions?
I'd just like to thank you, Dr. Penner, for bringing us up to date. I'm particularly pleased on me at the moment. It's great. The numbers have increased steadily since you take a number. And again, as councillor Owen said, the relationship with the town of Kirkland Lake and Northern College has been very, very solid both ways, I believe. And it's, we really appreciate you coming to talk to us and keeping us in the loop.
Well, it'll be after the elections, I'm sure, but I'm looking forward to inviting you to a couple of groundbreaking ceremonies that the college has done, some different things that we're going to do. And especially when we install these statues, which I understand will be the spring. But that's a really momentous opportunity for us. So you'll all be included in the invites to come, happy to have you.
Nice talking today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moved by councillor Ladd Chaba, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be resolved with councillor received a delegation re-update on Northern College and upcoming initiatives for information.
All in favor? Motion carried?
Second participant is joining us.
Hi Paul, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear myself?
Yes, we can.
Perfect.
Item 4.1. Update on the Kirkland Lake tour. Paul Medow, General Manager.
So good evening, members of council. First off, thank you very much for having me here tonight. As an update to our partner, the town of Kirkland Lake, I'd like to speak on maybe three key items that are happening on these projects. Before I go on, it's unfortunate I couldn't be there in person. I'd really like to do this presentation in person. We had a last minute incident management training that I had to attend to. But nonetheless, we're doing it virtually tonight. So the three items that I want to touch on tonight are the conditions of the sites, the possibility of an insurance claim, and also the revenue and cash flow for these projects. So the first item, the conditions of the sites. So we've received a number of calls and emails from residents that were driving along Archer Drive saying that these trackers have been pointing in every which direction for a while now. The three sites have not completely tracked since the winter of 2021 or 2020, 2021. This was originally due to an issue that occurred in November 2020 during the freeze thaw cycles. Ice would build up on the limit switches that prevented the trackers from stopping when they reached the east and west end stops. This caused the trackers to overturn and eventually pull out all the cables from the trunks of the trackers. So we got in contact with the manufacturer Sentinel Solar and they worked with us to design a new style of limit switch bracket that would minimize the risk of this happening again. By this time, we were in early spring 2021. Once we finalized the design and, you know, settled on a certain type of limit switch and we decided to proceed with the new system, orders were placed and we didn't get any parts until late summer last year. At that point, we proceeded to install new limit switch brackets and run new wires into the main trunks of the control cards. And that was done, I want to say by mid to late October. When it came time to turn the systems back on, it was noticed that due to the wires pulling out of the cards, we had suffered damages to the control cards and the inverters themselves. We began the process of bringing these back online one at a time. This entailed replacing and reprogramming control cards and repairing the damaged inverters. Since we were not getting much support from Sentinel, the original equipment manufacturer reached out directly to the control card manufacturer to help us with the reprogramming of the cards. At that point, we were notified that they would not support us any longer unless we ran AC cable and communication cabling directly to each and every tracker. The original communication design for these parks was done using wireless communication. Since the start of the projects, we've always had issues with communication as they use 900 megahertz band and it seemed very congested in the area. They were blaming it on mine traffic and other traffic. They were blaming it on mine traffic and other traffic in the area, but we're unsure exactly what's the cause of the, the congestion. This is why they want us to run a solid cable from tracker to tracker to be able to communicate directly. Knowing this information, we reached out to Sentinel to try and see if they could help us in getting this done. At this point, Sentinel had been sold and the company that bought them had actually changed into another company or changed their name. So we had an issue where we were having issues communicating directly with representatives. Once we got a hold of a company rep, you know, discussions over many months, two, three months, we were able to get them to provide the cables and chargers needed to get these AC systems done. So we finally received notification from Sentinel last week that the cables will be onsite next week and the chargers within the next two weeks. So we begin the work at KL1 next week or so to get this done as fast as possible before the frost gets into the ground. This should restore the tracking aspect, therefore bringing us back to the green in terms of production. The second item I want to talk about is the possibility of an insurance claim. So I contacted our insurance broker earlier this year and opened up an investigation into a possible claim. I met with an adjuster onsite this summer and he did a report into Intac or Insure to see if there would be covered under our insurance. There are two policies that are potentially at play here. We have an equipment and breakdown and a loss of revenue portion of those policies that we could potentially put a claim in for. So the total claim would be upwards of $300,000. That's due to the loss of revenue due to production and also the investments we had to put in the sites to get them back in working order. So we haven't heard anything yet from them, but I will share the information with the town of Kirkland Lake representatives when they do get it. The third item I wanted to talk about was revenue and cash flow. So our 2021 audited financials were approved last month at our town of Kirkland Lake Solar Board meeting. These financials showed that we had a loss of $331,000. This included $431,000 of amortization. We had a cash position at the start of the year of $632,000 and the end of the year, we had a cash position of $450,000. The reduction of $182,000 was mostly due to increased repair and maintenance costs due to the limit switch upgrades and the associated reduced revenue from the site loss tracking. There were no dividends issued to any parties due to lack of production and available cash in 2021. But we did, we, we, we did end up paying $3,496 in property taxes to the town of Kirkland Lake. In 2022, we expect the year-end numbers to be in the same ballpark as 2021's in terms of production revenue, but have higher repair and maintenance costs as we are performing the rewiring and communication portion. A potential offset would be an insurance settlement, but we are not factoring that into our forecast at this point. So for 2023, looking forward, we are expecting to have all the major issues resolved. If this is the case, we'll be back on track into our original production estimates. Now, it's important to note that we have not had a full year of production out of these sites yet. Since they were commissioned, we've always had issues with the tracking. Our ONM guys are all pointing to the controller cars not being able to communicate as a lack of power from the current charging setup. Hopefully, this will be our last major hurdle. That's the end of the formal update, but I'd like to open up the floor for any questions from council.
Counselor White?
Who sits on the board for KL Solar?
So for KL Solar from Cap Energy side, we have Guillaume Berry, which is our CEO, and Dave Plourde, which is our mayor. And on Kirkland Lake, we have your mayor, Pat Kylie, and also Sean LeGart.
That's it? Counselor White?
Yep.
Counselor?
Yeah, I mean Kirkland Lake doesn't see any revenue, but obviously somebody's getting paid, whether it's somebody on Cap Energy or, it's probably not our mayor or Sean LeGart, but somebody there is making some money. I just wonder how much and who? Because if we're not making any money, you know, some of that money that's being generated obviously is going to somebody else and they're doing a crappy job running our, our site. I just wonder who's getting paid and how much they're getting.
So nobody's getting paid anywhere. All the money that was generated out of the production has always been sitting in the accounts and then whatever expenses have been taken directly out of the operations account. So there's no dividends issued to any parties, whether it be from capis casing or from the town of Kirkland Lake. There are no management fees that have been charged as well. So there's, there's no money being dispersed other than repair and maintenance and operating costs.
Paul, have you seen the site at all?
Yes, I have, yeah.
Looks like, I mean, it's got more weeds in it than it has. They're going to cover solar panels in a few weeks if you keep this up. Maybe the snow will first, but it's, nobody's taking care of it. It's just like it's, it's abandoned.
So the, in terms of control of growth, vegetation growth, we do a management program every couple of years. So we're not due to do that in Kirkland Lake yet. We do it about every four or five years. So once those trackers, once the, the, the vegetation gets a certain limit, then we go and cut the sites. It shouldn't affect production at all until, you know, it gets up to like 25, 30 feet, which the tracker's at. So there shouldn't be any issues with vegetation management affecting production.
Counselor Owen? Yeah, I have a number of questions. I'm very disappointed in this project, needless to say. When a previous council approved this program, it was supposed to support, it was supposed to produce a great deal of revenue. And it hasn't. It was delayed and delayed and delayed before it was built. Now it seems we're having problems with the panels and all the technical stuff that I don't understand. But I did go to the open house where the people from that company were there and they assured everybody from the public that these were top-notch, top-of-the-line, most efficient panels that could be had. In fact, they could even produce electricity from the reflection off the snow. And yet, what have we seen? We've seen them break down, break down, and break down. It's not very reassuring when you drive along Archer Drive and you see panels supported by two-by-fours. I would expect a little more professional work than that. Now, have any of the other communities that Cap Power has partnered with made any money on their projects?
So we have a number of projects with surrounding municipalities. We have McGarry, we have Cobalt. We had Cobalt. We're now 100% owner of Cobalt and Engelhardt as well. We have not seen any revenue come back on these projects from any of the municipalities or any of the projects due to large upfront, you know, long-term financing costs. The payback on these projects or the, the higher-end payback on these projects is in the later years. So on the 15-year financing on certain projects, years 16 through 20 are where the most money's at. In, in terms of your sites in Kirkland Lake, I feel the same sentiment as you in terms of disappointment in the, the, the performance of them. I was there at Open House. I was there, you know, when Sentinel provided us with the estimates and explained the technology. I, I want to reassure you in a way that the, the issue is not the panels themselves. The panels are top-notch panels. They are LG panels. They are producing, they are bifacial. The issue is with the programming on the cards right at this moment and the tracking. So once we get these sites tracking again after we run the AC back to each and every tracker, I, I, I don't anticipate we would have any more issues due to communication nor controller cards rebooting and then losing programming. To speak to the ones that are on KL2 supported by two-by-fours, those were flagged earlier this year as being structurally unsound. So we had an engineering firm go out and verify them, do a report on them. And then we sent that report over to Sentinel. Sentinel had another independent engineer come out and verify them. And as per Sentinel Solar, they are deemed as being sturdy and being able to support your own weight. So we are going to remove them as soon as we reprogram the cars and get them tracking again. At this moment, they're just simply, you know, there for support. Since the trackers aren't operational and aren't tracking, we haven't spent money on sending guys over to remove those supports from them.
I guess my problem is that we partnered with Cap Power because of your expertise. And we're selling electricity at a premium price. That was part of a previous provincial government deal. So far, what I'm seeing is breakdowns, 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 and no revenue. So what? If, if the next council decided to get out of this deal, because it's not what it was supposed to be, the projections for revenue from day one, and as I remember it, the older the panels got, the less efficient they would be. So what if the next council wants out of this agreement? Is there a procedure for doing that? Because we've got industrial lots tied up there and other than getting less than $4,000 in taxes, where, where are the lots?
So it's up to council decision if they would like to pull out of the partnership. We do have a, a lease on the site for the 20-year life of the contract. So we would keep that lease in place and have those trackers operating for, you know, the life of the contract. If council decides to pull out of the partnership with Cap Energy, we, we can proceed that route. I just need to be advised and we can start the paperwork.
Okay, but I'm sure you can understand our frustration at this end.
I do, I do. And, and, and keep in mind that the town of Caps Casing or Cap Energy has a lot more frustration than that because we are invested financially in these projects. So the town of Kirkland Lake has not put anything up in terms of cash to build these projects out. It was 100% supported by Cap Energy. So we have, you know, about $3 million that are still sitting in these projects that we won't see until, you know, the long-term debt is paid off. So we are financially invested and we are very disappointed with the technology and the production so far.
And, and in all fairness, because I do try to be tough, but I, I do try to be fair. It is also possible that the management of the town of Kirkland Lake at the time inflated or gave us a rosier picture than what reality was. So I just want to point that out because none of us that are sitting at this table here, I don't believe you were part of that. Were you part of that? Okay, with the exception of the mayor, we're part of the signing of that deal. So we don't know what was said, what was promised. We do know what came out publicly and maybe it was a rosier picture than what, what had been presented. So I just want to say that because I don't want to be unfair.
Yeah, I, I, if I can just speak to that, Counselor. I was part of those discussions. I was part of the, the, the original projections that were brought out by Sentinel Solar. We even had two third-party engineering firms come in and verify those numbers. So I believe there was one engineering firm that was hired directly with the town of Kirkland Lake and there was one engineering firm hired directly by us and they both came out to revenue projections that were similar within a couple percent. So I want to reassure you that those projections are still in place and they're still capable of achieving those numbers. It's just the fact of getting them tracking and operating as they're supposed to. So those projections are based under perfect circumstances. In a perfect world, they were to produce X amount of energy. Unfortunately, we've had so many equipment breakdowns and, and I think the, the core issue is the design of that Sentinel tracker. The communication cards with the wireless communication is not ideal for, for that type of environment. There should have been a site survey done in terms of what the, the, the congestion was in that frequency. Fortunately, that wasn't done. We should have opted for AC directly to each tracker from the start. We should have opted to direct cabling. Unfortunately, those weren't on our radar at that time. If we were to rebuild the site today, we would go for those items for sure. But, but hopefully, once we get all this done, this should alleviate that, that breakdown or those breakdowns and have us producing again.
Okay, I just want to thank you for, for being here tonight and answering my questions.
Thank you.
Counselor Lawrence?
Curious as to when was the Board of KL Energy made aware that there was problems with these trackers?
Um.
Since 2020, the problem started, right? So we've had two presentations and nothing was ever, must I miss something? But I don't think anyone was ever mentioned just that there was issues with the trackers.
I, I believe I presented this last year was the last council meeting I attended. And I believe I, I spoke about the, the freeze thaw issue with the limit switches. But the board was made aware, I want to say, early 2021. I'd have to check through my documentation, but usually we have a quarterly meeting in, in March or April.
Oh, needless to say, we're all disappointed in the, I guess basically in the productivity that's coming out of solar panels. And I, to direct my conversation to Counselor Owen, these estimates were done by independent consulting firms. I mean, we have to believe that they were recently correct. Unfortunately, that just hasn't happened because of all the downtime. But it, again, we're looking at 2024 before we see even revenue. We were supposed to be from day one getting about 125, 150,000 a year at the beginning to our share of revenues. So it's been a dead horse for, now we're talking four years. So we've got to get this on track and get it up and running properly, no matter what the cost or complications.
Yeah. We are working towards that. Like I mentioned, we should have our, our cabling in next week. So that being said, we'll start as soon as possible and try and get as much done before winter hits. If winter does hit before and, and we're not done, we're just going to leave the cable on the ground and market for winter and go back and bury it in the summer.
Counselor White?
So my concern is governance. I don't understand when this was set up. All of our committees of council and boards of council have terms of reference stating when the committees meet, when the boards meet, how often they meet, and their reporting to council. So in the last four years, we've only received these two reports that, that you brought yourself. How often does this board meet? And why aren't there minutes presented to council? As per all of our other boards that members sit on, perhaps the clerk may have answers for that. I don't know.
Well, it's not a committee of council.
Okay. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so Paul, correct if I'm wrong here, but I have some experience with the previous partnerships. So it would be based on the agreement that was signed between the town of Kirkland Lake and the town of Caps Casing. And then whatever the, the recitals are in that agreement would stipulate when you would be reporting back to the council as a whole or to, to your, to your partners. And in terms of the terms of reference, that would be based on the corporation, which would be Kirkland Lake Solar. And from there, the appointment is probably already identified in the agreement as the named members of, of the respective parties in this circumstance. I believe it's the CAOs and the mayors. Excuse me, and the frequency of the meetings is probably identified based on the, the articles of incorporation of the corporation itself. So I hope that that, I, I have no other information in terms of, for this specific partnership because I haven't laid eyes on the agreement, but I would suspect that this is what the kind of makeup and design of this incorporation or corporation is. In terms of appointments, it is not a committee of council as identified by the mayor.
Okay, so to continue that, those questions, we have staff and council representation on that board. Were you aware of these deficits? And why was there never any flags brought to this council? So we could have dealt with it before a month before we're no longer a council.
One of the things was the accounting process that, Paul, I think you would agree, was inadequate in keeping us up to date with the productivity of the plant. We did change accountants and it has been mildly successful in getting up-to-date reports. But, uh, I, I do agree that we should at least be able to get a quarterly report, uh, on the, on the performance of the, under this project.
Yes, so just if I may, uh, in our last board meeting, we agreed on quarterly meetings. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure if the, uh, transfer information to council should come directly from myself or, uh, from the minutes that come from those meetings, uh, you know, provided by your staff. Um, I, I, I can do either way. If you want me to come do a quarterly update, uh, to council, uh, once we have our meetings, or if you want staff to provide you with minutes as information items, um, please advise on how you'd like to proceed.
I'm sure we should have a look at the agreement.
I think we'll review, review the, uh, financial arrangement of the agreement and get back to you.
Counselor Owen? Yeah, and Paul, I believe some of this is, is, uh, personally reporting issues, not corporate reporting issues. So, uh, my question to you, Paul, is, did our members of the board, how long did our members of the board know about these issues? With these, well, I follow mechanical issues, but I guess they're IT issues.
Yeah, um, I'd have, I'd have to look through, uh, our meeting notes to see exactly when it was reported to the board. Um, I, I just want to note that there was a tremendous changeover in staff and, and different, uh, board members on the KL side over the years. I mean, I think since 2017, uh, I've had seven or eight different board members. Um, whether it be from economic development, from the CAOs, uh, you know, public works, uh, representatives. So I, I couldn't tell you exactly who was notified at what time unless I went through the minutes and, and identify that for you. Uh, but keep in mind, the minutes and that are, are all available, uh, or the meeting notes and minutes are all available on our Dropbox site that we share with the town of Kirkland Lake, uh, so your staff could pull that out and, and take a look at it as well.
And I'm optimistic, Paul, that the days of changing every two weeks who's on the board have come to an end in Kirkland Lake. I believe that we've put together a good management team and you will see, uh, far more stability. You'll be dealing with the same person over and over again, which will make it easier for you as well. Thank you.
Yeah, and I've, I've also noticed that from your end as well. I'm getting a lot more, um, questions that are, are specific and, and a lot more reviewing from your, from your side's board members, uh, which I appreciate as well.
Counselor Shabba?
Yeah, okay, Paul, uh, thank you very much, uh, for this information. Um, let me just, uh, try to, um, capture some of the stuff that you talked about. Uh, no full year production. I take it that is, there's, there's never been any full year production since the inception of this, uh, project. And you did, you get a lot of, uh, mechanical or technical problems, uh, that will be fixed. And with the hope that by year 2024, we'll be generating revenue and maybe have dividends. At, at the moment, there are no dividends going to anybody. So has there been any dividend at all going to anyone, any of the parties since the inception of the program?
No dividends have been issued.
Okay, um, there's a loss, as you indicated, $331,000, right? So how to manage that loss? So what's going to happen with that loss? Because we're not getting any revenue, so do we be, uh, part of that loss? Because we don't have any revenue.
Well, it's a loss on paper, but, uh, the amortization or depreciation, trust, or non, uh, cash.
No cash, okay.
So we're in a positive cash position.
Okay, just a bookkeeping, okay, that's fine. Um, I did ask, uh, at our last meeting that maybe we should have, uh, have a copy of this contract, because everybody at this table, we're all new to this. We don't know who negotiated what. We don't know how people get out of committee, how people get out of that committee. And all the questions that you're asking, Counsel, uh, why, we have no idea what's going on because we weren't here. So we should really be privy to that contract so that we have a, shall we say, educated decision later on. If we have to go to Plan B, which is, if this is not making any money, we better find ways to get out of it. So, I mean, I, I, I don't know if that's forthcoming, but my question to you is that what happens if we don't make money? We're still in the same boat, not making any money past year 2024, I should put it. So what's next?
So was that question directed to me, Counsel Shabba?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, so, so, um, it's important to note as well that the town of Kirkland Lake has a very limited recourse in this, uh, agreement. So if there ever, we can't service our long-term debt and let's say everything is, is, is gone bad, we're negative everywhere, uh, and we can't repay that. The, um, the sites are held, uh, in collateral from the senior lender, which is TD. Uh, TD has a, we have a limited recourse guarantee from the town of Kirkland Lake. That's only valued to the value of the shares, uh, in the company. So the only recourse that Kirkland Lake would feel is it would lose their shares in the company. There would be no out-of-cash or out-of-pocket expenses, um, from your end. Cap Energy is the guarantee on the, uh, on the projects. So if ever, uh, the town of Kirkland Lake Solar cannot make the payments, the, uh, Cap Energy comes in and, and, and provides that money, uh, to be able to make those payments.
You started doing your lease for the balance of the 20, uh, 20 years, right?
Yeah, the lease is in place to match the contract length. So it's a 20-year fit contract with the IESO, uh, and the lease matches that with optional extension agreements offered.
Any further questions or comments? Not noted?
Moved by Counsel Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Counsel Rick Owen. Be resolved that council received a delegation re-update on Kirkland Lake Solar for information.
All in favor?
Thank you, Paul, and we will be getting back to you shortly on the, uh, reporting relationship, uh, recommendations.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
Moved by Counsel Rick Owen, seconded by Counsel Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that council approved the minutes of the following meeting, minutes of the regular meeting of council held September 6th, 2022.
All in favor? Motion carries. Item number six, reports of municipal officers and communications. OPP contract renewal, now.
Uh, through your worship to members of council. Uh, utilizing the delegated authority under bylaw, uh, 22 dash 019, uh, during this linked-up period of council, uh, CAO, in order to provide stability to the town's policing capabilities, assigned in a mandatory agreement to extend OPP services till December 2023. The town's 2022 budget cost OPP services is nearly 2.6 million. It must be stressed that once the Community Safety and Policing Act comes into force, all municipal agreements with OPP will end. Municipals like Kirkland Lake will be expected to be part of the OPP detachment board, and police services will continue. We will be receiving more information when this transition occurs, most likely next year. Thank you.
Any comments?
There is, uh, like you said, this is under review, has been, and, uh, possibly COVID was a bit of a delay, but, uh, they're looking at a regional type board, so things are about to change. We don't have full details yet.
Any further comments?
Moved by Counsel Stacy White, seconded by Counsel Lad Shaba. Be resolved that report number 2022 CAO 06 entitled OPP contract renewal be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.2, request to purchase surplus land at 62nd Street. General, not, Latics Administration.
Thank you, Yourship, uh, through you to council. We did receive a request to purchase a piece of surplus land at 62nd Street. Um, the applicant currently has an active lease agreement on the property to accommodate the parking for their apartment building across the street. Um, the property was listed as surplus land, um, back in 2016. Uh, property is a vacant 50 by 120 foot watts, which is about 6,000 square feet. And the applicant offered, uh, $2 per square foot at the $12,000 rate. Um, so we're just looking for exceptions and all that, and questions.
None noted?
Moved by Counsel Stacy White, seconded by Counsel Lad Shaba. Be resolved that report number 2022 VE53 entitled request to purchase surplus land at 62nd Street be received for information.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.3, enabling access accessibility fund. Mr. Bonnie Secker, Director, Committee Relations, Service.
Thank you, Worship, through you to council. Cheryl from the library does send her regret. She is actually selling smile cookies right now. So she will make, I need to read it. At the last council meeting, you did receive, uh, an update from Counsel White about some upcoming work that we're going to be doing at the library. Right now, it consists of architectural review of the children's library, and they will be coming to council and to staff and to the public with their, um, their thoughts of what we could do to make the children's library more efficient and more productive and, and bring it up to date a little bit as well. In the meantime, we are looking for funds to make sure that once we do get the report from the architects, that we are able to go ahead and do the upgrades at no cost to the town of Kirkland Lake tax base. So what we are looking for is we're looking for any funding opportunities right now. We do have a lead donor and we are looking for grants as well and probably corporate sponsorship, just like the smile cookie. So as we were looking last week, we did find one option. It's called the Enabling Accessibility Fund. We have been successful with this fund in the past. The Enabling Accessibility Fund did fund the washrooms in the upstairs of the library in the past. It also fund, funded the washrooms at the splash park that we used in the Shaba shack so that we were able to have an accessible washer in the splash park. So we have applied in the past and been successful. It is an 80/20 split, this fund, so it's 80% provided by the fund. 20% would come from either the lead donor or from the smile cookie campaign or other things that we have underway right now. So there would be no cost. The main thing we'd be looking for would be accessible doors, so that you could have hands-free entrance into the children's department. So right now, there's, uh, a set of double doors, which we do need in a, in a winter environment. And one opens one way and one opens the other. And it is difficult, even for someone with a gym bag, to enter into the children's department. So it's something we can do standalone. We can act on right away. Um, this does close in November, so we do have to get the application out. And if we are successful, that's not going to inhibit the rest of the work that is going to be done. We'll also look to see, we'll speak with the architects, because they don't have the plan done yet. But we'll see if they have other ideas so we can maximize the use of the fund. So things like the circulation desk, it would be great to make sure it's accessible both for staff as well as for members of the public. Um, extra furniture in there to make sure it's accessible. So we will speak with them to see if we can maximize the ask, so we go right to the next one. Any questions?
Counselor White?
Yeah, no, amazing job, uh, good job, Bonnie. You know what? You work so damn hard and you seem to know the system so well. I guess if you've been here long enough, then you've kind of figured it all out. Uh, you know what? Uh, great ask and, uh, you know, I fully support your, uh, your application. And, uh, what costs me, the tax charge, nothing is great. That's even better, but, you know, even the $0.80 or, uh, the $0.20 was, is a great ask. So, uh, thank you very much.
Counselor White?
Yes, sorry, it's absolutely vital, um, to this project that it gets done, absolutely. Um, not only for accessibility for people with developmental delays or disabilities, but for grandparents coming in with mobility aids and women coming in with strollers and the children with their backpacks and hoodies. And so this is just an incredible find and great teamwork. Thank you so much.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, that's really good, Bonnie, and I just wanted, when I was at Tim Horton's on the first day, the one Tim Horton said, well, before noon hour, had sold 1,200 cookies and the other one had sold almost 1,000. Even the staff was suitably impressed. So I just want to remind everyone, and I'm not off topic, because we could use this money for the accessibility. I just want to take this to remind everyone, go out and forget your diets and buy a dozen of smile cookies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moved by Counsel Casey Owen, seconded by Counsel Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that report number 2022 CS13 entitled Enable Accessibility Grant Application Text Entangled Library, Children's Department be received and find that council authorizes submission of a grant application to the Enabling Accessibility Fund for the text entangled life, library, children's department as outlined within the report.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item, uh, 6.4, parking by law amendment, increase, uh, a no parking zone on government roadies and Dunfield Road. Step down. And there's corporations and then sorry.
Through your worship, through you to council. I'm here today to present a report to amend our, our parking by law to increase a no parking zone, or specifically at the intersection of government road, government road east and Dunfield Road. Uh, there was a safety concern that was brought to our attention stating that it was very dangerous to turn west or left from Dunfield Road onto government, as they weren't able to see the traffic coming when vehicles are parked in south side of the road. Uh, we did our investigation and yes, we found out that the no parking sign on southwest corner of that intersection is indeed standard at 90 meters from the intersection. But when vehicles are parked right up to the parking sign and because of the, the layout of the intersection, because there's also a hill that goes, uh, on government between Dunfield and Allen Avenue, you just don't see. So drivers were essentially forced to creep into the intersection and risking not coming ahead on collision essentially. And personally, I've turned there several times and I've had the same issue. So our, we've determined that the best solution is simply to move that sign further away from the intersection. So we're moving it from nine meters to 33 meters and, uh, we were removing safety protection.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, that's an intersection I'm very familiar with. And when we received, uh, funding to redo that stretch of the, uh, government road, I asked our director of corporate services at the time if the problem with that hill was going to be addressed to take out the blind spots. And he assured me it would be, but it wasn't. Now, somebody who uses that, uh, intersection on quite a regular basis, whether there's cars parked there or not, you cannot see the cars coming. It's not an issue of parking, it's an issue of the design of the road. If there, more times than not, when I use that intersection, there's no one parked there. But I still can't see the hip, the cars coming out of the hill. Um, also, did you consult with Masonic Hall about how that would affect their operations?
With who, sir?
The Masonic Hall? It's right on the corner there?
Uh, no, no, we haven't.
Ah. I, you know, normally on safety things, and I agree, it is a safety hazard. I just disagree on what causes. The cause is the hill, not the party.
Counselor Owen?
Did you consider, consider an alternative of a no left turn instead of, uh, moving the, the no parking zone? So you could only turn east for that intersection?
No, that was not considered. We basically increased the viewing distance or the site distance from nine meters up to 33 meters, is what we did. The hill, we cannot control it.
No, I, well, no, I, and I agree you can't, and I'm not even suggesting that we start even blasting the brand names. I think we would have other people upset that their streets are on the list. But i- if, I do tend to agree a bit with Counsel Owen on this one, that visibility is a problem regardless of cars there or not. I think it might help if there's no cars, but if you just stop traffic from turning left, that car, force cars to either go Silver Knight or down the hill to Allen, you could alleviate some of the issues of cold calls now. You could alleviate some of the issues of cold calls now. It is a possibility. I'm not a traffic expert, it's just I'm thinking a lot on this one.
It could be a possibility, yes.
The only thing is they have to go all the way around.
It's Kirkland Lake, it's not a big way around though.
It's it's a very joint.
Well, it's silver. Well, we have the same problem with Allen. In fact, it's worse at Allen because you got you totally pull all the way. So if you stop where you're supposed to stop on the stop sign, not only can you not see the cars coming from the Dunfield side. You can't see the cars coming from the west because the utility pole was there. So then you've got to go out into the intersection. Now you're blocking pedestrian traffic. And putting yourself at risk. And the Allen Avenue is much more used than the than the Dunfield. Um, we have serious. Safety problems out there. And I'm not sure that parking is positive. In fact, I'm sure parking is not positive. There are other factors.
Councillor Owen?
Um, I do agree because I travel that area as well for for work and um. Visibility on both Allen and and Dunfield are low. And I think to mitigate any risk, at least we're attempting to mitigate our risk in in this area. And we've done things in the past to try to mitigate risk and and mitigate issues. And we've had to come back to the table and say, you know what? That hasn't worked. We have to go to plan B. So in that respect. I appreciate that we're trying to alleviate this area. And there's nothing saying that if it doesn't work, if there is accidents, we can't look at this a second time or actually next council, we'll look at this.
Very great. Any other comments?
Moved by councillor Lott Chaba, seconded by councillor Stacy White, be resolved that report number twenty twenty-two P W sixteen. Entitled Parking Bylaw Amendment Increase to No Parking Zone Government Road East. At Dunfield Road be received and then council approved the proposed amendments to table K. Parking restrictions and schedule K two parking restrictions of bylaw fifteen seventeen as amended. And finally, that an amending bylaw be brought forward for three readings on September twentieth twenty twenty-two.
All in favor? Motion carried.
opposed.
One opposed.
Thank you.
Item six point five easement agreement with Hydro One. And sweep right, right? Camera.
Thank you worship through you to council. I recently received a request from Hydro One to um have an easement agreement on the laneway. That is adjacent to four Main Street and it does traverse behind uh that address as well. Staff did meet on site with them and they did agree that it was a suitable location for the. The uh the placement of the pole with two anchors and then the underground service. Um, so Hydro One is just looking at entering into the the easement agreement so that they can do the installation of the services and continually upgrade the maintenance that they need to.
Any comments?
Moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Casey Owens, be resolved that report number twenty twenty-two D V fifty-four. Entitled Easement Agreement with Hydro One Networks Inc. Main Street Laneway be received. And then council authorized the mayor municipal clerk to execute an easement agreement with Hydro One Networks. Inc. As identified within the report and finally that an execution by law will be brought forward for three readings on September twentieth twenty twenty-two.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point six, apply for the to the Timiscamay District Joint Compliance Audit Committee. Yeah?
Good evening worship and members of council. Uh, this report is being presented to you this evening to obtain approval on the appointments of persons qualified and interested. In joining the Timiscamay District Joint Compliance Audit Committee. As you're all aware, uh, the requirement of the committee being formed is legislated uh as per the Municipal Elections Act and must be established by October first twenty twenty. So at your regular meeting held on February fifteenth, you approved the appointment of a compliance audit committee. I authorized myself to proceed with the call for interest and to solicit the interest of the municipal, the municipalities. In the Timiscamay District uh region for a joint committee, as such, the Timiscamay uh District Joint Compliance Audit Committee was formed in May twenty twenty-two. At your regular meeting held on June seventh, you approved the terms of reference for the Timiscamay. Uh, joint compliance audit committee, which I'm going to uh identify as T C A C for the remainder of my summary. Uh, a call for interest ran district wide in June and was extended additionally for five times through to September. There was a lack of interest during the call, however, by September sixteenth, which was last Friday, the minimum number of applications were received by the membership. The working group met on the morning of September sixteenth, uh, so that I can put this report before you. Uh, to make the recommendations as identified within the report. Uh, the applicants were evaluated on their independence from current municipal and rural and local board involvement and based on their strong financial backgrounds and experience. The applicants recommended as alternative members were contacted during the review process and have cited no issues with being appointed as alternate alternative members. I should note that earlier today I did receive a further application of an interested individual. Uh, as the lead of the T D C A C, I identified that the T D C A C would be uh keeping their application on file. Should a vacancy materialize? And I did note that the terms of reference. Provide the authority to the member clerks to put forward a call for member membership. Should a vacancy transpire in the future and that this applicant would be considered should that that need arise. The town of Kirkland Lake is only responsible for compliance audit applications directly relating to positions of the mayor and councillors. Who were certified by myself uh for the town of Kirkland Lake or any other candidate in office in a by-election status. Uh, it should be noted that school boards are responsible for the compliance audit of those offices related to their respective boards. Administration uh will need to budget for all the uh terms in the year, uh, sorry, all the years in a term. Uh, for compliance audit to ensure financial accountability and compliance with the municipal elections act and the terms of records. So this concludes my summary worship and I welcome questions from council if there are.
Councillor Owen, what's what's I know we have to do, but just what's our cost from this?
Um, I can tell you that for one member, it's a hundred and fifty dollar um sta- uh stipend every time they're called. Uh, three minimum. Um, and then they get a training session. They get paid for a training session as well. But it depends on, I can't forecast that. I I did have, I had identified to council back in March when I did the research. That there hadn't been a compliance audit uh done for Kirkland Lake for as far as back as I could do research for. Uh, but um I I would potentially put uh earmark five thousand dollars in a year. Um, that would carry over to future years if needed.
Yeah, no, that's great. I mean, it's a minimal cost. It's something we have to do. I was just curious as to, are we talking a hundred thousand or fifty thousand, ten thousand?
No further comments?
Okay, uh, moved by councillor Lott Chaba, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivenoff. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty-two C L K twenty-one entitled appointments to the Timiscamay District Joint Compliance Audit Committee be received. And that the council, the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake hereby established a Timiscamay. District Joint Compliance Audit Committee and that council approved the appointment of the following members to the Timiscamay District Joint Compliance Audit Committee. For a term to expire on November fourteenth twenty twenty-six. Alvin Willard, Robert Norris, Heather Sandrin, Chris Ray is an alternate member and Dawn Stutholm as an alternate member. There's an amendment, an amendment on the floor moved by councillor Lott Chaba, seconded by Eugene Ivenoff. That the recommendation, sorry, that the recommendation includes the following paragraph and finally that an appointment by law will be brought forward for three readings on September twentieth twenty twenty-two.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number seven, consideration of notices of motions. None noted? Introduction reading and consideration of violence.
Moved by councillor Stacy White, seconded by councillor Casey Owens, be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time, numbered pass signed by the mayor clerk. And the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two seventy-eight being a bylaw to authorize the mayor municipal clerk to execute documents related to the sale of sixty-second street. The two-three-two-three oh oh eight Ontario link.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Stacy White, be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time, numbered pass signed by the mayor clerk. And the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty-two oh seventy-nine being a bylaw to amend by law fifteen oh seventeen for the regulation of parking for the town of Kirkland Lake. Table K Parking Restrictions and Schedule K two Parking Restrictions.
All in favor?
I have a point of order here.
Okay.
Um, I cannot vote in favor of this, so I cannot be a second or mover on this.
Worship, if I may, to uh to uh provide procedural information. Uh, moving and seconding, if you don't want want to be a part of the third reading, I can certainly look for another uh mover, which I will take from councillor Eugene Ivenoff. Did you want me to repeat the?
No.
The motion. So the mover is uh councillor Eugene Ivenoff, the second here is councillor Stacy White.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by councillor Eugene Ivenoff, seconded by councillor Lott Chaba, be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time, numbered pass signed by the mayor clerk. And the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two eighty being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement. Um, and sorry, an easement agreement with Hydro One Networks Inc.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Stacy White, be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time, numbered pass signed by the mayor clerk. And the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two eighty-one being a bylaw to establish and appoint. The Timiscamay District Joint Compliance Audit Committee.
All in favor? Motion carried. Questions from council to staff, none noted? Noticees of motion, councillor White?
At our next regular meeting, I will be bringing forth the motion in regards to the Strong Mayor's Building Home Act. That's it.
Any notice? Councillor Chaba?
Councillor Chaba? Yeah, our next meeting, I'm bringing in a motion uh to consider this, the contractual agreement that we have with uh KL Solar Inc.
A point of order?
Go ahead.
Um, can we do that since we're in a lame duck uh position here?
Okay, we have a discussion about it.
Through his worship to all council. Um, as far as I know, if it has anything to do with anything over fifty thousand dollars, it would be a restricted act of this council. And with the decision would be solely on uh the shoulders of the C A O as delegated authority. Until lame duck is complete.
Are they too much?
So did you, are so are you striking your notice of motion? Or are you keeping it?
I'm keeping it.
Okay, so.
I don't know what, I don't know how much.
Are you looking for, you're looking to reconsider the agreement?
No, I'm looking to have a a discussion. I mean, at least get to know the agreement. I don't know, because we're not. We don't understand the agreement, so why do we get to understand the agreement?
Okay, so you can work with myself and uh we'll work on uh crafting on getting an information report. I presume is that what you want?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll say information report on KL Solar Inc. Instead of the reconsideration of the agreement. Because the way that it sits right now, it would technically technically not be a decision of council, right? It would be a decision to the C A O.
Okay.
Okay.
And number eleven, councillors' reports. Councillor White?
Um, so this is my A M O report and I used to do last time, but I spoke a lot last time. Uh, as C A O, Mr. Alan Smith noted in his report last council meeting. The Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference was held in Ottawa this year from August fourteenth to the seventeenth and he and myself were the only two. Uh, uh, from Kirkland Lake in attendance. I attended the pre-conference workshop on Sunday, the asset management, creating your municipality sustainability story. What I brought out of that session was it's not enough just to put a plan to paper. It has to be woven through every decision, every report and every vote. We consider the service levels, corporate risks and associated costs throughout the lifecycle. From inception to the end of use, every time, every item. During the four days, I attended the full program, the Northern Caucus Lunch on Infrastructure and Investments. The integrated mental health and addictions approaches. Firefighter certification, fostering collaboration and cooperation to search for solutions to the opioid crisis. And the blue box transition T minus eleven months to launch. Uh, I specifically chose programming which directly related to our community to ensure I would bring back the most relevant information to share at this table. Uh, through the talk given by the, though the fire, the talk from the fire chief during the firefighter certification presentation. Really opened my eyes to the level of responsibility sitting on the shoulders of our fire crews. The most impactful bit of information I took away from this conference was the tone temperature check. To determine the ethos in our organization. Though the last four years have been challenging. We are working together to be on the same team. To respect the expertise, perspectives and wisdoms in this room. With collective intelligence which thrives and respects that conflicts are not personal. We are now building a culture of optimism, innovation, positivity, hope, fearlessness, courage and thoughtfulness. We are focused on the service of both current and future generations. And of course, I collected a wealth of information that I thought the departments might uh be interested. Uh, I hope we can continue to prioritize attendance at these conferences. The networking and the information provided are equally important to build our community's future. And I do have a pile for everyone, sorry.
Certainly it sounds a bit like a worthwhile uh attendance uh in the different areas of A M O.
Councillor Chaba, would you update the chair?
Good, we can roll. Okay, item eleven point one.
This is from the Office of the Mayor of the Town of Kirkland Lake. Proclamation. National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, T R C. Released released its final report on June second, two thousand and fifteen, which included ninety-four calls. Uh, to action to redress the legacy of residential schools and the vast process of Canadian reconciliation. And whereas the recent discoveries of remains and landmark graves across Canada have led to increased calls to levels of government. To address the recommendations of the T R C's call to action. And whereas all Canadians and all orders of government have a role to play in reconciliation. Whereas recommended number eighty of the T R C. Called upon the federal government to collaborate. With Aboriginal peoples to establish a statutory holiday, the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation. To ensure that the public. Uh, commemoration of the history and legacy of the residential school. Remains a vital component of the reconciliation process. And whereas in two thousand and twenty-one, the federal government declared September thirtieth. As the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation, National Orange Shirt Day. And as a statutory holiday. And whereas September thirtieth. Has been reclaimed by survivors as a day to listen to the stories of those affected by the residential school system. To celebrate the inherent value of indigenous peoples and their culture. And to reflect on the ways in which our society would improve. In order to better uplift and respect indigenous peoples living in Canada. And whereas the town of Kirkland Lake supports taking concrete action towards reconciliation and believes that the. That acknowledging National Day of Truth and reconciliation as a municipal. Statutory holiday is an important step in supporting both indigenous and non-indigenous people. statutory holiday is an important step in supporting both indigenous and non-indigenous people. People's ability to engage with and understand the value of indigenous indigenous history, culture and tradition. Now therefore, I Pat Kylie, Mayor of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim September thirtieth, twenty twenty two as National Day for Truth and Reconciliation National Orange Shirt Day in the town of Kirkland Lake. So be it.
Uh, through your acting mayor, Shaba, to your worship, acting councillor, Kylie. Uh, are we aware of any uh, services, events or um, anything that's going on in the community that day? Because now would be a good time to get that word out there so people would be aware.
There is a powwow on September the thirtieth, I believe, at uh, I think it's at seventh this year. Uh, with different groups attending, I will be attending. Uh, all of council is more than welcome to attend where you are insured if possible. It's a, it's an interesting day. It's a uh, wake up call to all Kirkland Lakers uh, towards our indigenous people. Well worth it.
Those are all questions. What are they in the speech?
Through you, uh, active mayor to all council, uh, just want to advise you that in the air release, we'll be going now the town of Kirkland Lake website uh, tomorrow in honor of Truth and Reconciliation Day along with a copy of the signed proclamation. Um, and um, and it will, then a flag will be raised, uh, two flags will be raised, a survivor's flag will be raised at town hall uh, effective September twenty ninth because we are closed on the thirtieth. So we will have them raised on the twenty ninth and we will uh, have them raised until October third.
So the, for the reports from council members, none noted?
Okay, and moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor La Chava. Be resolved that the verbal um, updates from members of council be received and there's an amendment on the floor moved by councillor Eugene uh, Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor La Chava. Um, that the recommendation be amended as follows, be resolved with the verbal reports and updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. We'll have a ten minute recess.
Okay.
Okay.
Moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Stacy White, be resolved that councillor during camera pursuit of section two thirty ninety two of the municipal act two thousand and one as amended, as amended at six twenty seven P M for the following reason. Item thirteen point one being a person, personal matter about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employee and labor relations or employee negotiations.
All in favor? Motion carried. I have fourteen matters on my court session.
Okay, moved by councillor La Chava, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, be resolved that council reconvened open session at seven oh four P M.
All in favor? Here.
Sorry.
On the mission.
Uh, moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty two eighty two being a bylaw to confirm the proceeding of council, proceedings of council at its meeting held September twentieth, twenty twenty.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by councillor Stacy White, seconded by councillor Rick Owens, be resolved that this regular meeting of council be now adjourned at seven oh four P M.
All in favor?